Thanks to my family and friends who are here in support of me. I really appreciate it. I just want to say that being up here for how many years now, almost going on 10 years, there's been a lot of ups and downs, a lot of learning, a lot of growth, and I'm really appreciative that I'm back here again to continue in this role. I want to serve my community, continue to serve my community with humility, with dignity. I just, I want to be able to be that person that provides what is necessary for my community irrespective of who they are and what their condition is or their position is. I really want to say thank you to those who've always been here for me, including council members here, my peers, and the mayor. And special thanks to Judge McCullough. This is our fourth appearance here, and I really want to say thank you, and I appreciate it. And to the general public, thank you for those who've challenged me, those who have supported me, those who've been very encouraging. I really appreciate that, and I want to continue in partnership with the community to serve the City of Federal Way to the best of my ability. So, I ask for your grace, and I also ask for patience, and I really want to be that person that could represent our residents here. So, thank you very much.
All right. All right, and I think we've got the microphones set up over here. Good to see you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to everyone. Good evening.
I should have said all rise. Sorry. Sorry, Your Honor. I am delighted to be here, and I'm being joined by Father Belay and Pastor Berhano. Did I ever mispronounce that?
No, you said it right.
Okay. And I do that because, please be seated. You're fine. I do that because I honor Lydia, Councilmember Asafa Dawson. I honor her, I honor her ancestors here in this country and the ancestors in the wonderful, beautiful country of Ethiopia. And we honor all of you for taking the time to start 2024 in this incredible environment. Isn't this great to be able to see these young people, young people, being sworn in and to see all of you here taking the time to make sure that your city government does what you want it to do? So, as a public and elected official myself, I join Lydia, Councilmember Asafa Dawson, in thanking all of you for your past support and for the support that you're going to give her. And Councilmember Asafa Dawson, I just want to speak on behalf of the people that are here to say thank you for just being that bright shining star that has set the example. So, I would like to, if protocol will allow me to do this, to just give you a hand of applause for being who you are. Ten years. Ten wonderful years. Ten wonderful years. So, with that, now that I've taken more time than I was allotted, I'll ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lydia Asafa Dawson.
Having been duly elected to the office.
Having been duly elected to the office.
Of City of Federal Way, Council Position Number One.
City of Federal Way, Council Position Number One.
Oh, go ahead and clap if you want. I see that her son is here, her daughter, her daughter-in-law. Thank you, folks, for coming. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And a citizen of the State of Washington.
And a citizen of the State of Washington.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I affirm that I would support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Federal Way, Washington.
Of the City of Federal Way, Washington.
Woo! And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
In and for the City of Federal Way, Washington.
In and for the City of Federal Way, Washington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Councilmember Lydia Asafa Dawson. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. All right. Yes. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, and now Judge Larson will be approaching the podium to swear in. Councilmember Susan Honda.
So, Judge McCullough was concerned about going first, and now I'm concerned about him going first. Very tough act to follow. I'm going to share, Susan and I and Bruce have been neighbors for over 30 years, so it's my special honor to administer the oath to Susan. And Bruce and I went to high school together, although he was a couple of years ahead of me, so he's a little older. But, so we've known each other quite some time. So, Susan, I'm going to have you raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Susan Honda.
Hi, Susan Honda.
Having been duly elected to the office of the City of Federal Way, Council Position Number Three.
Oh, that's lovely.
Okay, just a minute. Having been duly elected to the office.
Having been duly elected to the office.
Of City of Federal Way, Council Position Number Three.
Of City of Federal Way, Council Position Number Three.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Federal Way, Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Federal Way, Washington.
And I will faithfully and impartially perform.
I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge.
And discharge.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
In and for the City of Federal Way, Washington.
In and for the City of Federal Way, Washington.
According to law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Now, Your Honor, we'll do all the swearing-ins, and then I'll open the floor to the newly sworn-in councilmembers to say a few words.
Okay.
But let's get them sworn in. First, our next councilmember, reelected, is Jack Walsh.
Now, I first met Jack Walsh when I was on the board of Pacific Ballroom Dance, and that's when I first met him. That was a number of years ago. And he's, for some reason, he thinks that I, that he likes me for some reason.
Actually, I'm kind of tempted to have Judge McCullough swear in instead, because he called us, he called us young.
Oh, there you go. Well, I'm, I'm, I have my hand up.
We're the same age, so we can be young.
That's it. I appreciate it. So, repeat after me. I, Jack Walsh.
I, Jack Walsh.
Having been duly elected to the office.
Having been duly elected to the office.
Of City of Federal Way, Council Position Number Five.
Of City of Federal Way, Council Position Number Five.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Federal Way, Washington.
Of the City of Federal Way, Washington.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of this office.
Perform and discharge the duties of this office.
In and for the City of Federal Way, Washington.
In and for the City of Federal Way, Washington.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Congratulations. And now, Councilmember Linda Kochmar.
Now, of all the councilmembers, I've known Linda the longest, because my dad was the best man at her wedding. And I think, I think I was still in high school, but maybe I was in law school.
Yeah, you were a baby.
There you go. So, raise your right hand. I, Linda Kochmar.
I, Linda Kochmar.
Having been duly elected to the office.
Having been duly elected to the office.
Of City of Federal Way, Council Position Number Seven.
Of City of Federal Way, Council Position Number Seven.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Federal Way, Washington.
Of the City of Federal Way, Washington.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of this office.
Perform and discharge the duties of this office.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
Washington.
Washington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability. Thank you.
Congratulations. Very much appreciate the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for your service. All right, now, let's start with Councilmember Susan Honda.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say it's an honor and a privilege to be a councilmember, and it's something I don't take for granted. I do my best to represent the people who live and work in Federal Way and the people who work for our city. They work hard every day, and they need representation, too. We are facing uncertain times, and we have tough decisions to make as a council, and sometimes that's really hard. In fact, that's always really hard to make a tough decision, because you know you're not going to make everyone happy. The council will need to work together and to study, learn, and learn more about the issues that are coming before us. I make my decisions based on information that staff has presented, my own research, and what is, I feel, best for the city. I'd like to thank my family, especially my husband, for their support during this last year, my campaign manager, Melinda Ruiz, who is here in the audience, and her family, and everyone who held signs, put signs together, who listened and supported me during the last nine months. I'd like to thank the voters of Federal Way for your support. This is my fourth term, and I continue to be as excited as my first term. Please know that I'm here to represent you. It's an honor to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well said. All right, Councilmember Linda Kochmar.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. You might want to know that the Constitution on the wall there is something that Judge Larson brought back from Washington, D.C. I think it's very important for us to realize that we are governed by laws and regulations, and that it's very important for keeping our city clean and healthy and a place that we're proud to call our home. I've been on the council now since 1999. I started telling people how old I was, because I thought, well, people should know that you're living longer, until they started deciding I was old, and then I thought, well, I'm not saying that anymore. So, but I want to thank all of you. We have a wonderful council here, working on your behalf. We don't always agree, and that's okay. We shouldn't. And we're, this council is much better when we argue a position and then come to a consensus, and then shake hands and move forward. And so, I want to thank all of you, all of those folks who are here, who come here on a regular basis. Thank you. And I want to say thank you to, thank you for your help in my reelection campaign, all of the people who are in the audience. I can see you. Thank you. You are wonderful. And so, moving forward, we have a lot of issues on our agenda, one of which is making sure that we can afford everything that we need to do. But anyway, I think that if we all come together and talk about what it is we want and need, and then come to a consensus, we're going to be better off as a community as a whole. So, thank you all very much for being here, and thank you for supporting me.
Thank you. Councilmember Jack Walsh.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everybody, everybody here and the citizens of Federal Way. It's been, been an honor, and it continues to be an honor to serve you. We live in a wonderful, wonderful community. And as you look at the people out here today, you know, the, I love Federal Way. I love our community. I love the people here, and it's an honor to, to be with you. I'd like to especially thank my wife, Judy, who is, who is here. Without her support, I would not be able to do very much at all. She keeps me in line, and thank you, Judy. And I want to thank the supporters with the campaign, a number of you here. Robin, thank you especially, and so many others who did so much. Thank you, thank you. One of the wonderful things about Federal Way is that people want to, to make our community better, and, and I appreciate that. I truly appreciate it. The very fact that you're here this evening, the very fact that you're willing to serve and to volunteer with different things and to help your neighbors, that is great. We are a great community. I also want to let my fellow councilmembers here know of the appreciation and the respect that I have for them. And, you know, sometimes we don't agree on things, but I consider everyone up here a friend, and, and I appreciate that. As Linda said, disagreement is good. I mean, you know, who would want to live in a, in a place, in a one-party state? I mean, that'd be terrible. And though we're nonpartisans, we still have different opinions on different things. You'll notice that when we don't have a unanimous vote, that it could be any one of us that is voting different. There's not, you know, there's not different factions or different things, and, and I appreciate that. But the people here, thank you for being, thank you for being friends. And with that, I've said enough. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, congratulations, council, for your re-elections. And now, we are on to the, the election of the leadership of the council. The first is the election of council president and oath of office, and next is the election of deputy mayor and oath of office. These are defined in Federal Way Municipal Code 18.1. I'll go through it, because there have been questions about what's the difference between council president and deputy mayor. So, let's, let's parse that out, and then I'll talk about the process for voting. All right, nominations of voting. 18.1, council president and deputy mayor will be nominated and elected from the ranks of the sitting council members. 18.2, the council president shall exercise the authority of, quote, deputy mayor, end quote, or mayor pro tem, described in RCW 35A.12.065. The council president will be elected for a two-year term at the regular, at the first regular city council meeting in January by a majority vote consistent with RCW 35A.12.065. The city council may rescind the vote of the council president by a simple majority. If a vacancy occurs, the council will elect a council president to fill the unexpired term. The Federal Way Municipal Code, then, under 18.3, provides the deputy mayor will function as an internal council officer, as outlined in these rules of procedure, or as delegated by the council president. The deputy mayor will be elected for a two-year term at the first regular city council meeting in January. 18.4 states the mayor or designee will conduct the election for the council president and the deputy mayor. See Appendix A to these rules. So, this is the way it works. Appendix A, council president and deputy mayor election process. Number one, any council member may nominate a candidate. No second is needed. Number two, nominations are closed by a motion, second and two-thirds vote of the council. Number three, if only one nomination is made, it is appropriate to make a motion and obtain a second to instruct the city clerk to cast a unanimous ballot for that nomination. Approval is by majority vote of council members present. If more than one nomination is made, an open election is conducted by roll-call vote. To be elected, the nominee needs a majority vote of the council. Six, elections will continue until a council president and deputy mayor are elected by a majority vote of the council. Seven, the mayor will declare the nominee receiving the majority vote. So, at this stage, and what will happen is, once we, you know, once the nominations are made and then closed, we'll have Stephanie go through position number one through seven, and they will, their casting of vote will be to state the name of the individual that they're voting for. Once somebody reaches four votes, we'll have a first, a council president, and then a deputy mayor. Okay, with that, I will now open the floor for nominations for council president.
I would like to make a statement and make a motion.
Yes.
Can I do that?
Councilmember Asafa Dawson, correct, yes.
So, I would like to make a motion that we discuss about the two positions, council president and deputy mayor, and decide whether or not it is necessary to have both.
Okay. And I see, is there, Councilmember Dovey?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. So, there's been a motion and a second to have a discussion, and would we want to do that before the election of council president or after the election of council president?
I would like it to be done now, before.
Done now, okay. So, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion to have that discussion about whether we have the two positions? Now, we have these in our rules, so we wouldn't, I want to make sure that it's clear, and we've got legal counsel here. If the council decided they did not want to fill that second position, I'm not the city attorney, but that play went on TV. Just kidding. But if they, why don't we have, Ryan, why don't you say what the rule is? If, if the council decided they did not want to fill the deputy mayor position and just wanted to do that, what would they do to, what would be a mechanism to achieve that?
So, the deputy mayor position is defined in code by council. So, if council takes action tonight to not fill that position, I would ask that it further instruct me to come back with changes to the rules to make that change permanent. But I think we start with the discussion and see where it goes.
Okay, very good. So, inaction on that second point would have essentially, would accomplish that goal. I want to make sure.
For tonight.
For tonight, correct. Okay, Councilmember Asafa Dawson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. First of all, I do want to say thank you to both Deputy Mayor Susan Honda and Council President Linda Kochmar for the years of service.
Mayor, point of war, technically, we need to take a vote on the motion to have this discussion.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. The, but there's, isn't this discussion? You know what?
Motion to discuss. This is the discussion about the discussion.
You bet, you bet. Okay. Thank you. All right, there's, thank you, council. There's, there has been a motion and a second made to have a discussion on this issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, now we're legit. All right. Councilmember?
Okay. So, these two positions were enacted two years ago, and at the time, I was not supportive of it, because I didn't understand why we were doing it, why it was necessary to have two positions when there's only seven council members here, and also, I did not understand the roles and responsibilities of those two positions. But we agreed to do it, and I was also willing to give it a try and see how effective and efficient that was. From my understanding and my experience, I don't see why we need two positions. I find it very confusing and unnecessary. And actually, as you're reading 18.2 and 18.3, it says the council president shall exercise the authority of deputy mayor. And then, we have the position of the deputy mayor. So, I think it's very redundant to have those two positions. And as far as I'm concerned, in the past, actually, we had a deputy mayor. We went to council president, and it's worked very well. So, I would really like to go back to having one position, council president position, because that's what we decided on about four years ago. So, that's my reason to want to get rid of the deputy mayor position. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council president, I see your lights on. Oh, okay. Is there anybody? Councilmember Dovey?
Yeah. I would like to understand from our attorney. I tend to agree with council member Lydia, but I'd like to know the process of if that can be done tonight, or, you know, you talked about we've put it into code. What, what are the steps if this council decided tonight or wanted to, to make those changes?
So, I, I would start with seeing if there's consensus to make the changes, and if, from there, there's two ways to handle it. Either you can direct me to come back with a resolution that formally changes the rules, or council could tonight direct me to make the changes administratively and present them to council. So, I think, because this is a fairly, basically, this is a reversion back to previous code. I already, it's already written. We would just go back to the way it was. So, it's not terribly complicated, but my preference would be to bring out a resolution back to council at the next council meeting.
So, follow-up question. Does, does that mean that you, we would vote on one position, council president tonight, and then you would come back to us at the next meeting, so we couldn't make that change tonight, or is it a two-step process or one step or?
So, one, there's two things happening tonight. One is an election for deputy mayor. Whether or not council decides to take that action or not, it's up to council. If council doesn't vote on that issue, if there's not a motion and a second and a consensus, then the, the position would remain open. The actual changes in the rules would happen later, when I came back with a resolution changing the rules back to how they were before.
Okay, thank you.
Would that require a first and a second reading, or would the resolution just be passed with one vote?
It's just a resolution, one vote.
Very good. Okay. Counsel, any other discussion on that? Councilman Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, two years ago, I was not in favor of having both position, council president and the deputy mayor. Same reason that council member Lydia stated. However, for the last two years, I have seen both of them work within their responsibility to move the council forward, to move the city forward. There are a lot of work that happening with this council. There are a lot of events that happening within the city. One person cannot be at everywhere, at every event. So, to me, after watching both of them operate in this two position, to me, I think they complement each other. So, for that reason, I am now actually in favor of keeping both as defined in our rules and ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. So, is, would council presidents be to have a motion, or if just maybe a?
Yeah, if someone wants to get the floor and make a motion, they could do that, or we could just move on.
All right. So, Councilmember Asafa Dawson, are you satisfied with the discussion we've had so far, or do you have a, of a motion to make?
Unless there's other discussions, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So, we will talk about the deputy mayor position after we address the council president position. So, now, I will now open the floor for nominations for council president. Councilmember Dovey?
Yeah, I'd nominate Linda Kochmar.
Okay. Councilmember Kochmar. A councilmember?
I nominate Susan Honda.
All right. And Councilmember Asafa Dawson?
I nominate Hong Tran.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been a, it's been moved in a second to close nominations. Is there any further discussion on the issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
All right. Stephanie, city clerk. Are you being facetious, or you, well, you cast a vote no, so we'll need to do a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Asafa Dawson?
Hong Tran?
This is to.
I or N for closing.
This is for closing.
Oh, for closing, sure, aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Tran?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovey?
Aye.
Councilmember Honda?
Aye.
Councilmember Kochmar?
Aye.
Motion carries six, one.
Okay. And now, we've got three nominees. We'll start, we'll go through a roll call. They are Councilmember Linda Kochmar, Councilmember Susan Honda, Councilmember Hong Tran.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before you do that, could I make the statement, please?
Would you please? Yes.
I am honored to be nominated, but I am respectful decline because of the work that I do right now. I carry a full-time job, and I believe that the council pres- I carry a full-time job, and I believe that the council president, you know, whoever in that position would have to spend a lot more time than I can afford. So, for that very same reason, I mean, you know, personal reason, I don't think I can do a good job for, you know, leading the council, so for that reason, I, please, I withdraw my nomination, if I may.
Okay, I accept.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, and now, for, we've closed nominations, and now it's time, a roll call will be conducted, and when, when your name is called, please identify the candidate of your choice, either Councilmember Kochmar or Councilmember Honda. Stephanie?
I'm going to call these in position order, just so everybody's clear.
Yep.
So, Councilmember Sephardosin?
Linda Kochmar.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Susan Honda.
Councilmember Honda?
Susan Honda.
Councilmember Tran?
Susan Honda.
Councilmember Walsh?
Linda Kochmar.
Councilmember Dovey?
Linda Kochmar.
And Councilmember Kochmar?
Linda Kochmar.
Successful candidate is Linda Kochmar.
Okay, I, let's, I think you've got to be sworn in, council president.
Okay, I'm going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Linda Kochmar.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
City of Federal Way Council President.
City of Federal Way Council President.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States?
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington?
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And laws of the state of Washington?
And laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances?
And the laws of ordinances.
Of the city of Federal Way, Washington.
Of the city of Federal Way, Washington.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge?
Perform and discharge.
The duties of this office?
The duties of this office.
In and for the city of Federal Way, Washington?
In and for the city of Federal Way, Washington.
According to the law?
According to the law.
And the best of my ability?
And the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, Linda.
Well, congratulations, council president. Would you like to say a few words?
We're going to need your help. We've got a lot of things to, on our plate, next two years, very, one of which is, we have to build a maintenance facility, operations and maintenance facility, and then talk about developing our downtown. So, we'll be having a retreat in February, so you're all welcome to come to that, when we'll be discussing how we're going to move forward. So, I thank my colleagues for their confidence in me, and you know one thing I would like to say? I would like to see this position transition through the council, so that it's not just one person, so that multiple people have that ability. Mr. Tran? Over time, if they're capable of doing it, I think it's better for you as a city, and it's good for the council to understand how it all works, but you got me, Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now, we're on to the next item on the agenda, and there had been a discussion that we had had on the dais here about not wanting to fill the position. We talked about either whether there'd be a motion to leave it empty, or the failure of a motion would, inaction, would leave the position open. Is there any, Councilmember Walsh? I see your, oh, so. Is there, is there consensus on the council to wait? Is there consensus on the council to move forward?
Absent a motion, I think we should move forward with the deputy mayor nominations.
So, absent, Councilmember Dovey? Council, I'm sorry, what? All right, in the absence of a motion?
Are we going to make a, are you asking for a motion to eliminate the deputy mayor position?
Well, or to-
If there is, I will make that motion.
Okay, there's been a motion, not tonight, but to start that process?
If that's the process to do it, I'd-
And that would then leave the position open tonight?
Or if we could just make it happen tonight, and then we get on with life.
Okay, I think we're, all right, so, your motion is to, to conduct a process to eliminate the deputy mayor position. Is there?
Yeah, that would be the motion I would like to, that we discussed, that I think we should move forward.
Okay.
Second?
There's been a motion, a second. Is there a discussion to that motion?
Maybe I could-
Yes.
Provide some insight. Susan is a wonderful person. She has worked very hard on behalf of the city. She has great ideas, but it's very difficult when you're in a leadership position to have two prongs, and so it's really better just to have one and then work together on your behalf, so it, I thought it might work two years ago. I wanted to honor Susan for all the work she'd been doing, but it really is better just to have one person, so I thank my colleagues for recognizing that, and I think we should move forward. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Now, if this motion passes, would you take that as, how would you, as the motion as it's presented now?
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
Stephanie, you have it?
To eliminate the deputy mayor position?
Yes.
I would take that as direction to come back with a resolution to do that.
There's been a motion and a second to eliminate the deputy mayor position, and that would essentially leave the position, by virtue of this passes, leave this vacant tonight, and then council, the legal council would return for, to make sure that the code would be formally amended. Councilmember McDaniel?
I was just verifying, so, this passes and we're not voting on that position?
That's correct.
Okay, let me make sure.
Thank you. Essentially, a point of order, thank you, council. Councilmember, Councilmember Sephardosin? Oh, just wanted, all right. All right, there's been a motion and a second to essentially eliminate the deputy mayor position and to direct legal council to come back with paperwork or a resolution confirming the same and formally amending the city code. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Sephardosin?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Honda?
Nay.
Councilmember Tran?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovey?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
Motion carries four three.
All right, thank you very much. Now, at this time, we had-
Can I, can I reiterate one more thing?
Yes, would you please?
It is not about personalities, it's not what this vote is about. The vote is about, I mean, because, take us out, Susan and I, take us out, take any of us on the council out of the vote. In the future, how will this vote? How will this work? So, you really have to look at it as a thing moving forward for the future, so, anyway, thank you very much, Susan.
All right, thank you, council. All right, the city council will be in recess briefly, a reception, to honor the newly elected council members and our council president, and what we've got, what have we got, 10 after? Why don't we say 10 minutes for a brief reception? We'll reconvene at 7:20. We're in recess for that purpose.
Actually, at the White House that day for a policy meeting. So she was unable to attend, but we had already shared with her our agenda. We had a very good and candid conversation about the issues that we were concerned about and that compose our legislative agenda. And we don't need to get into the details of that. Actually, a very good story was written in The Mirror about it. And it's also, I think, our agenda is online and on the city website as well. So, okay, but that's the picture. And we were over at the community center. Thank you, John and Leaf and team over at the community center. We had a very good conversation, and our lobbyists were there as well. Okay, next. Many of you may have heard that we've got a pedestrian safety issue over at Federalway High School at Pack Highway at 308. You could see there that the students on the upper left there had a demonstration. And actually, the top left and bottom right were pictures from that demonstration when they were, it was entitled "Let Us Walk." There are concerns about accidents at that location or pedestrians being struck. And regional media was out there, and I had an opportunity to talk with them along with our, the superintendent of public, of our school district, Dr. Pfeiffer, as well as many of the students. And, you know, I think it's a very important, it's critically important that we do everything we can to reduce speeds at that location. And then actually, to the bottom left, you see a meeting that was convened jointly by myself and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Pfeiffer, along with senior staff there, both from the city and from the school. Those conversations are ongoing. We're going to be going through a process of requesting an official speed reduction on this state highway. Anything that happens on Pack Highway has to be approved by the State Department of Transportation. We do have some signage, but I think we're talking about better lighting. We're talking about more flashing things, letting drivers know at that location that students are crossing. And so a number of steps are being taken. We're going through, I've got our Public Works Director, E.J. Walsh, who's been working, along with our Chief of Police and senior staffs to, and I appreciate Bill's help as well, and Brian Davis, our city administrator, just working at every level to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that our students have safe access to schools. One of the things I think Dr. Pfeiffer has really taken the ball and run with it, we were talking initially about crossing guards at that location because the speeds are a little bit higher. But I also mentioned that we've reached out to the State Department of Transportation, asked for a speed reduction. They need some data. We're going to provide that and work on quite a number of different levels. But we also need people to know that, you know, there have been other pedestrian accidents in our community as well. Probably one of the most, you know, Chief Wong says all the time, probably the most dangerous thing you do on a daily basis is to get in your car and drive around, especially on a foggy, dark night. But when you're walking around as well, you really need to be aware of your circumstances when you cross, you know, across the street. Even if you push a button for a crosswalk, you need to make sure that those cars are stopping for you and just have your wits about you and really make sure you're not looking at a cellphone or anything like that and encourage, you know, the individuals around our community, whether it's for a jog or whether you're crossing the street for various reasons. We all find ourselves in that position at various times. And as the father of a high school student pretty close to that location, I could tell you that it's top of mind as well. I'm in my son's high school every school day, and so I shared my thoughts with the superintendent as well. So this is ongoing. I want to thank Councilmember Honda, who had reached out to and was in communication with some students at Federalway High School, and we are, we're working on that issue. So we'll give periodic updates as changes occur. Okay, next, we had, the governor came to town, and the Washington State Patrol Toxicology Lab opened on December 7th. And there's the governor in the lab, and there's our council president and councilmember Honda and myself at a press conference. It was great to see the governor. What this really means is the ability for the State Toxicology Lab to get better results for prosecutions and critical things that occur in conjunction with law enforcement. If there's a serious accident, if there's anything involving drugs that needs testing, that is literally occurring now in Federal Way. And it's over there essentially between, over by the warehouse or property in some of those buildings, just west and north of Highway 18. Beautiful office space and beautiful lab space. So we got a complete tour as well. Okay, let's see here. Recent community events. Oh, Simply Health opened on December 8th. It's great to see a new business. And the two married doctors, former Navy veterans, and they're right off of First Avenue. And they're two doctors of osteopath, doctors of osteopathy that have started a new medical practice, and it's always great to see people, new businesses come into our city. All right, next, we had the Decatur High School DECA mock competition on December 8th. And those were a few of the students, and they were really professional and it was always, it's fun. My partner and myself, we were, we graduated high school around the same time, not with each other, but we felt like the old guys that day. But they did a phenomenal job, all the contestants that came through. Next, we had the Open Doors at Truman Campus had a tour in my office on December 11th. And that's then getting the full 50-cent tour of my office and all my stories and my pictures and, well, just stories in general. And it was fun. So if you or if you have a classroom group or any kind of group that would like to come by and get the tour here, you know, when I was an intern many years ago at the state Capitol, that's one of the things they did is they had me do tours around the state Capitol. So I can tell you all kinds of interesting information about the state Capitol, but also about City Hall. So if you have classrooms that you'd like to come here, just let us know. The next, they were great. They had a bunch of great questions, too. All right, and that's Tanya Carter, our Economic Development Director. We were at the South Sound Chamber Legislative Coalition Breakfast on December 14th, and that was at Highline College. Cities in the entire South Sound were, obviously, were there. Their legislative delegations were there. And it was a good opportunity to talk about the upcoming legislative session that gets started here pretty quickly and a lot of issues that are going on down there. And, you know, you're stronger together, and it's really a great opportunity for us to work in conjunction with our neighboring cities. Next, at the request of the Senior Advisory Commission, one of the great organizations and commissions in our community, I attended and spoke for a little while, maybe a little too long. And I was there with Councilmember Honda and Council President Kochmar and Councilmember Jack Walsh, talking about all kinds of issues, and that's at the community center. And it was a good, it was during the noon hour on that day, so it was a good time to talk. Okay, and...
We had over 70 people attend that day.
It was great.
Yeah, it was awesome.
It was a good discussion. Thank you. All right, and then recent community events. We had the, now, I want to let you know, I called the swearing-in of our council members tonight a ceremonial swearing-in. I want to make sure that people know there's a lot of things that happen in government that may not be readily apparent. The council members had to be sworn in officially before midnight on January 1st because at the stroke of, you know, 1/1/24, they became legally council members. So they needed to be sworn in, even if it's just that gap between the first day of January and today. And so we did the official swearing-in here with just a couple, you know, I was there with council members, and that's a standard protocol issue to make sure there's no gap, that you don't have uns sworn council members. But we want to do it here with the community as well, and so that's something that we did here. Okay, upcoming community events. The council has its 2024 City Council Retreat, Dumas Bay Center, Saturday, February 3rd. And that's really a great time, you know, it's right down there at Dumas Bay, obviously, in the big room. We talk about a lot of the issues that, and strategic planning that we're working on, whether it's downtown, whether it's the, you know, different issues, public safety, all kinds of things that we're talking about. And we don't have to be as tethered to an agenda as we are today. And you can have some free-flowing discussions and ideas and a visioning process. So that's a really important, really important deal. The Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration in 2024 will be Monday, January 15th. The doors open at the Performing Arts and Events Center at 10:30. I think at 10:55, we're going to get started with the program. Your hard-working Diversity Commission is really working hard to get a great presentation for our community. That's an excellent opportunity to bring the community together and talk about Martin Luther King and his legacy and how we can all move forward. And then, so that's 10:30, doors open at 10:30, ends at noon, and then we'll keep the place open for an hour for networking time and also a food drive. So if you've got a couple of extra cans or if you want to go get some for a food drive, bring those to the pack as well. The next section of the free financial literacy classes begin Wednesday, January 24th through March 20th. And they're at 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM weekly at the Federalway Community Center. And those are very important to help people really work on their personal finances and the tools they need. And then next, I will be delivering the annual State of the City address. Theme is Welcome Home. You have to show up to figure out what that's all about. It's a free event. It's at the pack, and will be at 6:00 PM. Doors will probably open about 5:30. But we're providing something kind of fun at the beginning. You may want to get there early, you know, between 5:30 and 6:00. You also want to get a seat, too. And there'll be booths from organizations, local governments. Normally, I think we have, you know, I'd say at least three or four, sometimes four or five dozen booths out in the lobby, whether it's city staff or local organizations. So it's a great opportunity for our community to come together and talk about the direction we're going in and the state of the city. So that is my report. Let's see here. Okay, now, the most important part of the evening is public comment. We ask everybody just to let us know the community they live in. We don't, we do not need your address. Green means go. Yellow means, you've got about 30 seconds. Red means please stop. I really hate interrupting people. So if, once you see it go to yellow, you kind of know it's time to kind of wind down. And when it hits red, please stop. Okay, and everybody knows the rules, so be respectful and all that. Okay, so why don't I call out a few, and we can stage, and we'll go from there. Where did I put my glasses? All right. First, we're going to have Matthew Johnson, then Gordon Bach, then Melissa Hamilton, Jaclyn Copley, Aaron Walsh, Susan Strong, Haley Renee Howell, Anna Patrick, and Betty Taylor. Okay, Mr. Johnson, the floor is yours.
My name is Matthew Johnson, and I've been a quote "street person of felony way" for over 30 years. I'd like to congratulate the outside interests, the landlords, and the blue shirts. Your puppets will be obstructing all kinds of progress so you can get your money back on your investments. That's four more years of rising rents, four more years of the city allowing private corporations to suck us dry, and four more years of incompetence from a socially-funded private security force that loses hundreds of thousands of dollars in equipment while chasing shopping carts. Speaking of the blue shirts, I heard the chief cried in front of the city council about children having rights. You couldn't just choke on the heel of fascism in silence and ride out the rest of your days on the public dime. Instead, I have to hear about you not wanting to do the basic and most important part of your job, providing evidence to a judge to obtain a warrant for a search. You know, the Fourth Amendment. The people of Federal Way, left or right, should be absolutely worried that our police force and its guild continue to spout totalitarian talking points and false narratives while using fear tactics to scare you into ignoring that they waste 40% of our city's budget. Cops like you are why people demand police accountability and proper education, not eight months of playing at a gun club to be a wannabe action hero. $23 million of our city's budget is wasted on the Federal Way blue shirts. That's $257 per resident per month for your children to be stripped of rights while simply trying to attend school. That's 48% more than other police stations across the country per capita. That's not including another $20 million for prison services. And for the record, health and family housing fight over $5 million. The cost to oppress the people is only outweighed by your own personal investments. You treat schools like prisons, and then you're shocked when prisoners come out. Maybe funding after-school programs, meal programs, and teacher salaries would change some things. Instead, you hire 100 more people that don't even live in the city to protect Walmart and Amazon's bottom line. And for the Disney Channel villain that bought his way onto the city council, a totalitarian regime is a group of people who hoard and distribute power not by a vote but from people...
Mr. Johnson, let's not talk about individuals, please.
Are you calling somebody out specifically? Because I didn't.
All right, please.
For the, so anyways, like, when you give money to multiple city council members after your third-place loss, when you couldn't even achieve 2,000 votes out of 100,000 voters, you rally against socialism when you yourself are a walking definition of a welfare queen. You've been so...
You've got 30 seconds left, but can we get away from the individual, Mr. Johnson?
I'm sorry, I don't see him as an elected official. I see him as somebody who bought his way out. So you can hide behind the rules all you want. Start me up. We should expect your resignation by the end of the year.
Mr. Johnson, you're out of order. You're out of order.
Really? I'm out of order?
You are. This is not an opportunity...
You spent $24 million and assert your dominance over children, and I'm the one out of order?
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, eat it.
Okay, next is Gordon Bach.
I am a commissioner on the Human Services Commission. At this time, I am representing the views of the Human Services Commission in a prepared statement. The Human Services Commission was allocated $600,000 last year through ARPA funding to be used for workforce development and financial literacy. The commission took great pains to decide how those funds should be allocated for the best needs of the community. During the city council meeting of 12/5/2023, the allocation was reduced by more than 50%. We would like to formally express our disappointment that the city council reallocated ARPA funds and reprioritized funding based on other needs outside of the RFP, Request for Proposal, priorities. With respect to the time and dedication of our committee members, we would like to invite the council to enhance the communication channel between the city council and Human Services Commission so that we can better adjust our recommendations based on new funding targets or priorities coming from the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bach, and thank you for your service. All right, Melissa Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and community. My name is Melissa Hamilton. I'm a Federal Way resident. I'm here to express my gratitude for the work this council is doing in regard to the pursuit laws. I was disappointed, however, to hear our legislators' response to our legislative agenda. Disappointed, but not... Disappointed, but not surprised. The response given was what I expected. I feel our police chief worked very hard to bring what the community has expressed to the forefront and to bring the statistics and the numbers that were requested, only to have that disregarded and arbitrarily discredited. Ignoring major variables like the police pursuit law when evaluating what has caused the recent explosion in crime is not only reckless, but it's bad research methodology. Also, looking at the minutes from that legislative breakfast and reading the part where it says our legislator is supportive of addressing, quote, "the root cause of many of the concerns and issues raised, including gun control, restorative justice, and social programs," end quote. Sitting in that meeting, what I heard was supportive of eroding constitutional rights, closing the jails, and more taxes to fund government programs that aren't working. We have two empty hotels in our city that was supposed to solve the homeless issue. Their track record of running social programs isn't all that great. I would respond with these questions. Where is accountability for offenders in all of this? Is there a plan to hold offenders accountable for their crimes? How do they plan to keep pedestrians and drivers safe from criminals driving recklessly in stolen vehicles if the police can't stop them? How is addressing housing and food insecurity going to prevent juveniles from stealing cars with their buddies and posting videos of themselves taunting victims and police on TikTok? Is a total lack of offender accountability not also a root cause to all of this? I believe it is. According to the Washington Traffic Safety Commission, in 2022, a reported seven hundred and fifty people died in fatal collisions on Washington roads, the most since nineteen ninety. Authorities say four key behaviors among drivers resulted in seventy-five percent of the deaths in 2022: impairment, distraction, speeding, and not wearing seatbelts. And so, to make our roads safe, the legislature is committed to banning police pursuits. Makes zero sense. I do want to acknowledge that there is no one solution to our problem with crime, but I know for sure that giving our police responsibility without authority does not work. Community policing builds the public's trust, something that we know we need right now. I have a lot more ideas on that, but I'm running out of time. I want our police to know that we appreciate the work that you do, and even though it's discouraging and demoralizing to be given responsibility without authority, please do not give up, persevere, and let's keep the pressure on until we get this fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaclyn Copley.
Sorry, I wasn't ready. Good evening. I'm Jaclyn Copley, and I just wanted to comment regarding the ordinance. I did review the ordinance regarding the shelters, specifically the overnight shelters. I had a couple of questions and concerns. One of them is that I think it's important to put some kind of stipulation or some kind of time requirement on how long they have to get the license. I know that the day shelter has been working on that for, I think it's been like a while now, so I think that we need to have some kind of timeline there that's an incentive to actually go through with it. Also, I'm wondering what teeth are in this. I didn't see any consequences if they don't follow through with the specifications in here. It also, I see that one of the things they're adding is guests, so the people, the residents or people can bring guests. I know that's not really relevant until the two hotels open, but how many guests? I mean, is there a number? Are they just bringing people willy-nilly? I'm concerned about that. Also, in terms of, I know there's been talk about moving City Hall. I think just, I know it's not, some of this is King County money, but there's something like thirty-two million that we just spent on the hotels that are still vacant, that I don't know, even know if we can use the red lion, that's like nine million. So we're talking about millions of dollars, and the government isn't using our money very well. So the idea of trying to move City Hall when we have crime like we have, I don't feel safe in the city. I don't feel safe walking around at night. I didn't go to Fred Meyer for about three weeks when people were getting robbed daily, and I've shopped there for sixteen years, so almost exclusively. And so I don't want to, like, hear about this kind of money being spent or the idea tossed around when there are so many other things that we could be using it on. I think the police in our city do the best that they can. I think they're doing fantastic, I'm very proud of them, but I wish that they were maybe getting more funding and their hands weren't as tied. So I just wanted to say that I have concerns about spending millions and millions of dollars on moving City Hall when there's a lot more important things to be spending our money on. That's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Jaclyn, that's one of those issues we're going to be talking about, sorry, interrupted. One of those issues we're going to be talking about at the retreat, and just about downtown development, and that may be one of the issues. So hopefully we'll see you at Dumas Bay. Okay, Erin Walsh.
Mayor Farrell and members of the city council, thank you so much for all the work you do, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Erin Walsh. I'm a social worker and resident of Federal Way. I'm a member of the Human Services Commission, but tonight I'm speaking as a citizen. I must express my deep disappointment and sadness over how the council chose to disperse ARPA funds that were set aside for human services on November twenty-first. It is my understanding that ARPA funds were provided by the federal government to local governments to help with recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. The council audibly chose to set aside a certain amount of this funding to support workforce development and financial literacy programs. These could help people recover financially and meet their basic needs after the economic devastation of the pandemic. The city requested grant proposals from nonprofits in the community and made bold statements about the amount of funds available and the large size of expected grants. The Federal Way Human Services Commission reviewed grant applications, which were solicited through a fair and equal process, and the commission made funding recommendations to the council. Rather than following the recommendations of the Human Services Commission, and rather than exclusively funding organizations who applied for funding through a fair and equal process, the council chose to divert a large amount of funding to emergent park needs, and the council chose to fund a financial literacy program through the city that failed to apply through a fair and equal process. Pre-existing connections with the city or council members superseded fair and equal procedures. As a result, grants dispersed to service organizations were much smaller than initially promised. ARPA funds were meant to address pandemic recovery, not emergent city needs related to theft and vandalism. How can we expect nonprofits to partner with our city if the council breaks its promises and funds organizations that don't even apply for the grant? I request the council consider the following steps. Please do everything in your power to dedicate funds to human services and financial literacy services. If there is any avenue to increase funding to nonprofits that serve our community, please utilize these funds and rectify the mistake that was made when ARPA funding was diverted to emergent city park needs. In the future, if proposals are requested for grant funding, please only fund organizations that apply for the grant. Honor the fair and equal process outlined by this government. In the future, if funds are dedicated to human services and organizations are informed about the amount of funding they're applying for, please honor these commitments. Human services are just, our, human services are not a luxury. They are vital to building a peaceful, just, and thriving community. Social welfare, equality, equity, and the common good must be our priorities as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, and thank you for your service. Susan Strong.
Mayor Farrell, council president Coach Mark, council members. I'm Susan Strong, and I still live in Federal Way. Recently, I sat down and I thought about whether the citizen's safety and homelessness situation has improved lately in Federal Way. The first thought that came to my mind is that the Twin Lakes Fred Meyer store now has two movable security trailers in their parking lot. They didn't have any when I first moved here in nineteen seventy-five. Then I thought about how several people have been threatened near the ATM machine in the bank next to Starbucks Coffee Shop on Twenty-First Avenue, which isn't far from Fred Meyer. Both of these businesses are across from the parking lot. Then my mind went to the new employee I noticed in the Fred Meyer store. He is a uniformed security person. I have to admit, I felt safer knowing there was a security person walking around in the Fred Meyer store. I do not have a safe feeling when I am driving around Federal Way. Just a month ago, I had a discussion with my husband about me using a cash machine when I'm out by myself. It was decided I will no longer use a cash machine when I'm alone. We have now turned over the calendar to the New Year 2024. My personal opinion is that our city has not become more safe, and that the situation could get very unpleasant in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Haley Renee Howell.
Good evening, everyone. I live in the Federal Way area, and I have my entire eighteen years of life. I graduated from Thomas Jefferson High School last year, so I am not currently a scholar. However, I am a young member of the community with a cousin who still attends the Federal Way School District. As the mayor previously mentioned, recently the city has been shaken by an incident occurring at the Federal Way High School, and today I come to you as a concerned citizen of the youth. Federal Way Public School District had a meeting on December thirteenth with the superintendent as well as the mayor. I recognize that this was potentially beneficial and could promote positive change, so I did my own minor research. I discovered that the city of Federal Way has a youth commission. I also learned that none of those commissioners were present at the time of the meeting, which was to ensure the safety of our students as well as the community. The city cannot properly serve the youth without getting any input about what the youth in Federal Way actually need. I come to you as a concerned youth and guardian, wanting nothing but the best for the fellow residents in my city. As a young woman in Federal Way who has never attended a city council meeting before, I respectfully demand that the youth commission is to be more involved in city meetings in the future because they deserve the opportunity to serve the youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Patrick, and then Betty Taylor.
Well, I'm not really prepared to say anything tonight. I just asked somebody to sign me up, so, in all honesty, but I do have a couple of questions about the ordinance that you guys are going to be talking about tonight, so. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council. So I'm Anna, I live in Federal Way. I have for over twenty years. So a couple of questions. This, you know, these clarifications on the licensing for shelters, permanent supportive housing, and day shelters, looks like some good things, based on what I'm seeing initially, adding guests to the ordinance, so that that's clarifying. I'm still a little bit confused about the exceptions for the day shelters, not having people on staff, not having lighting, that makes sense to me, but just reading it here, you know, the except for, where did I see it? Except for emergency housing and shelter facilities that do not provide overnight accommodations, adopt a broadly, and broadly disseminate a written security and emergency plan, sounds confusing to me. So I hope that that's going to be clarified, that that part of it applies to all of them, the day shelters and the overnight shelters. And, you know, with the, with, I concur with Jaclyn's comments about making sure that we have some clear guidelines on how long, how long before some of these already operating shelters need to get, take, can take before they can get this licensing in place, because I could see them easily taking excessively long and, and just maybe making sure that there's a little bit of enforcement there. And, you know, considering how impactful that day shelter has been on local business, it has been devastating to local business. We have got to get a handle on that. So I would hope that we're going to expect that sooner rather than later, that they get that licensing in place. I'm glad that we're requiring that now. Kind of sounds like that's the case here. So hoping that this is really clear for residential neighborhoods, that we're going to be enforcing the same rules regarding drugs. And also with day shelters, is that also, the distance from schools, does that also apply to that? I guess I have questions about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And then Keith Niven, who is going to be giving that presentation, just walked in halfway through your comments. Sorry, Keith, you never know what you're going to get called on. Would you do me a favor? Would you maybe connect right now with Ms. Patrick?
We talked on the break.
Oh, you did?
We can, we can continue later, but I think we had a good conversation during the recess.
Can you make sure that her questions that she made, that, the questions she has are addressed in your presentation later on?
Absolutely, I'll do my best.
Oh, very good. And, and, you know, when I was taking a look at this, I saw that you wanted to comment on the, on the ordinance, so I, I just called all public comment right now. So if, if for some reason we get to the point where you don't believe your questions, if you have further questions, let me know, and I can have you come back up to the podium during the ordinance. Okay? Okay, Betty Taylor. Good to see you, Betty.
Good evening, my name is Betty Taylor. November, November twenty-first, I was not at the city council meeting, but had the opportunity to, to watch it online. I mean, on YouTube. I am coming here as a citizen. I am on the Human Service Commission, but I'm coming here as a citizen. I, I, the human service commissioners work hard. Our job and our mission is to review grants, grade them, and, and give our recommendations afterwards. We work hard. It's a hard job. It's really hard. We have sleepless nights, you know, but we get the job done because we care. We put all our soul, mind, and body into those organizations and agencies that apply for funding. We use wisdom in grading. But as I watched the November twenty-first city council meeting, I understand that there was a break in at one of the facilities. And I understand, I, but I couldn't under, well, I understand, but I don't understand. I couldn't understand how the city didn't have enough money or enough funds to take care of damaged property or, or, or even an emergency fund to use if something like that happens. But I was really hurt when I, as I proceeded to watch the video that, that the, they use the ARPA funds to fund, to, to take care of the, the damage that was done in one of the building facilities, and the ARPA funding was supposed to be used for, we had, we, we had eleven applications. Out of those eleven, we knew that only four was going to get picked. But then after the city council meeting, it went from four to three. So only three agencies are going to get funding. One agency that we approved for funding, they're not going to get funding. We, we need money. We need money. We need money, lots of money. If we're going to fund these organizations, if we're going to, if we're going to review applications, if we're going to submit these applications to council for their approval, we need more funding. We need more funding. We need more grant writers. We, we need funding, because how are we going to take care of these nonprofits with, with just nothing? It's really harmful, and it's, it's really hurtful. It is so hurtful to save and work hard and review grants, but you can't, you, you, you don't even have the funding to give these people because nothing's coming in. It's really important. We love, we do, on the Human Service Commission, we put our, our heart into it, but then when I, when, you know, when we heard what the city council did, and that just, everybody was so, like, everybody was in their feelings. And so, we talked about coming to the council because you need to hear us. You need to hear our heart, because it, we work hard, day and night, to approve applications. We go through them one by one, and it's not no easy job either. But we do it, but we care. We care.
Thank, thank you, Betty. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Do we have any online?
I can't see around the balloon. We don't have anyone online. We did receive two written comments that were forwarded to the mayor and council from John Shaifry and Darshpreet Verk. And with that, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you, everybody, for your participation in, in public comment. It's very important. It's the most important thing we do is to hear your input. Item six, council committee and regional committee reports. The Parks and Recreation Human Services Public Safety Committee. I would note that once, now that we've got a reelection of the council and also the election of the council president, there'll probably be a review of the committee's structure. But that's for the council president to decide and to propose to council. But at this stage, the most recent Parks and Public Safety Committee Chairman was Councilmember Walsh.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. I would first like to just briefly address the, the, the Human Services Commission. That falls under the, under the Parks Recreation Human Services and, and, and Public Safety Committee. And, and I would like to, to personally express to the Human Services Commission our appreciation for the work that they do, my personal appreciation. I've served on that commission, and I, I think it's the, the hardest-working commission in the city. That there is a lot of, of work. There's a lot of grants that are reviewed. There's a lot of time spent studying and everything. And, and I greatly respect the work that they do. And I think that the, what occurred that there, that was brought up is a, basically quite a rare exception to what, what would normally happen. But when there's sometimes, when there's, there's events that happen and we receive additional information and stuff, at times, there needs to be adjustments. And, and I, I hope that in no way the Human Services Commission feels that their work is slighted in any way whatsoever. It's, I, I deeply respect, and I, I think that the rest of the council and mayor respect the, the work that you do as well. And, but once again, occasionally, there's additional information, additional situations. And once in a while, very rarely, but once in a while, there needs to be an adjustment. So, I, I hope that you'll, you'll understand that. And I agree that there's, can be perhaps better communication. Sometimes, there's not much time to communicate. Sometimes, there's very, very little time to communicate. And when, with the council, with the commission meetings only occurring once a month, it, it can be difficult to provide that communication. But thank you for your work. As far as the, 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 our committee, we did not meet in December. Our next meeting will be a week from tonight at five o'clock on January eleventh, and would love to see some of you there. Thank you.
Okay, Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Doby.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope I got the date right. January eighth is the land use meeting here in this chambers. I'd like to make one comment from the mayor's emerging issues regarding the financial literacy class. A lot's gone into that, and Councilmember Adopt Lydia is going to be assisting. We're actually bringing on a second financial training group through the Washington State Employee Credit Union. So, Bill Vodino and I and Lydia have been working on that. And now, we have the normal class that we ran, and there will be a second class so people can choose which one they want to go to. And I just wanted to make sure that people understood that. And Lydia has gracefully volunteered to help with the, the credit union project on that side of the, the funding on that. So, I just wanted to add on to your emerging issues.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Finance Economic Development and Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our committee did not meet in the month of December, so our next meeting is going to be on January twenty-third at 5:00 p.m. in this room. Thank you.
Okay, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Safad Ason.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is going to be January tenth, where we're going to be hearing from several grantees about their after-project events reviewed by laws and if there's any applications, review those. So, that's going to be on Thursday, January tenth at ten o'clock. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And the council president report. Actually, Councilmember Hahn, did you have a, a report from?
I do.
Yeah.
So, excuse me, on December twenty-first, Amy Glendon from our staff, Chair Lana Bostic, and myself visited the Federal Way Senior Center to pass that Give Bigs and visit with the seniors. These were gifts from the senior commission. Every year, the senior commission chooses to help. It's, it's been one of the nursing homes. And this year, we decided to, to support the senior center over there on 356th. And we had a good time. We visited with the seniors. We sang songs. And they had lunch and bingo, and they were very appreciative of the gifts that were given. And they were very, also very appreciative of the money that was donated to the food bank there because they really do need support. And please don't forget the food bank now that Christmas is over and the holiday season is over because now is a tough time to get donations for food and support, and they need it year-round. That was the day after the very successful Senior Connection meeting, which the commission had, was their third, I think their third connection meeting in a row. And now, they are moving to doing it quarterly, so the next one will be in March. And the mayor did come and speak, and some other council members came and were there for a short while. And so, that was a very successful Senior Connection meeting. We had over seventy people there. And lunch was served, and they decorated cookies. So, I also attended the PIC meeting and skateboarded where we passed our legislative agenda for the year and a few other things. But, yeah, it seemed like the meetings were never ending up until the actual, until Friday, the twenty-second. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Council president.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to quote a metaphor I heard, which I think it's kind of apropos. Government is the car, but you are the drivers. So, if you would just please get involved, get involved with our retreat, get involved with the city council. You already are when you're coming here to speak at the council meeting. So, thank you very much for that. I'd like to tell my colleagues on the council that we're going to be talking about the committee. I imagine that everybody wants to keep it pretty much the same. So, if you have any changes or if any committee you want to be on, please let me know. I'll be talking to all of you about that. And then finally, we are scheduled to, all seven of us, I think you too, to go to Washington, D.C., March tenth through the thirteenth. So, make sure you get it on your calendar. Okay, but it's very important that we, I think Amy has got us reserved at the hotel so we don't have to walk a long way. But that's where we go to find, right? That's where we go to ask for money from the federal government. That's where we go to see Congressman Adam Smith and our two senators to ask for money for our city. And so, the, the, another metaphor is, if you're not there, if you're not at the table, you're not, you're, you're lunch. You, you have to be there to get the money. So, that's, your council is very concerned about that. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much, Council President. Item seven, consent agenda. These items have gone through council. It can be passed all at once. I'll read the three items and ask if a council member wants a particular item pulled for separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the December five, two thousand twenty-three regular and special meetings. December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four legislative breakfast summary. Item B, the citywide variable land use control project acceptance. And item C, middle housing grant and inter-local agreement. Council, is there an item you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, Council President.
Mayor, I move approval of items A through C. Excuse me. Yeah, A through C.
Second. It's been a motion of second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, A through C passed unanimously. Item eight, council business. Arts Commission appointees. And Councilmember Walsh.
Yes. I, I move appointment of Iveta Feldsenberg, Vicky Chenoweth, and Maran, Marana, Marina, excuse me if I don't have the pronunciation right, Pukas, to voting positions with terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion of a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Okay, so it's, we've got six coun, six council members, one voting present. Do we need a roll call for that? All right, great. Okay, and then item B, youth commission appointments. Oh, congratulations to the individuals on the Arts Commission. Item B, youth commission appointments. Councilmember Walsh.
There, there will be no youth commission appointments this evening.
All right. Item B is struck. Item C, Lodging Tax Advisory Commission appointments.
I move appointment of Mike Dunway to a funded by-tax position and Kristen Wells to a collect-tax position with terms to expire October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion of a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Doby. Okay, item nine, this is first reading for ordinances. Item A, Council Bill eight seventy-two, ordinance, adoption of state mandated building and construction codes. First, we'll have a presentation from our building official, Scott Sproul. Public comment if there is any, and then we'll move from there. So, Mr. Sproul, you have the floor.
His tech assistant is trying to help. Give me one moment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think we're ready now. They adopt the state-mandated construction codes for January twenty twenty-four. Policy question, should the city council amend Federal Way revised code Title thirteen buildings to adopt the adopted state-mandated and local construction codes? Discussion, the construction codes are enforced by the city fall into two categories, state-mandated codes and local codes adopted by the jurisdiction. State-mandated codes are required to be enforced at the city and county level pursuant to RCW nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-seven A, and nineteen twenty-eight. City adopts codes at the local level in order to reconcile these codes with other regulatory requirements and establish the resolutions. Local codes are permissible and are needed in order to provide enforcement for local building requirements. State-mandated codes include the building code, the residential code, the existing building code, mechanical code, the fire code, property maintenance code, plumbing code, electric code, energy code, and international wildlife urban interface code, and then factory-assembled structures. Local codes adopted by City of Federal Way, swimming pools and hot tubs. These regulations were drafted to regulate swimming pools and provide for fencing. Revisions following, Land Use Transportation Committee. South King Fire requested that their proposed amendments be delayed, allowing the fire staff to provide the council with complete response to the questions raised at the committee without delaying the update of the construction codes. South King Fire proposed amendments will be submitted separately for council consideration in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-four. The ordinance before the council does not contain the proposed amendments from South King Fire and Rescue. Council options, approve the ordinance, do not approve the ordinance, or the mayor recommends approval? Any questions?
When would the effective date of the ordinance be?
March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four is when the state will adopt the codes, and that's at the end of the ordinance. So, we're adopting them. I'm going through the council process ahead of the adoption date, but we put that ordinance will be effective March fifteenth of two thousand twenty-four. That's when the state effectively adopts the codes.
Great. Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, Scott, thank you very much for addressing the fire codes that you're, we talked about in land use. So, just so I understand, those will be coming back to land use in February or?
They said the first quarter.
First quarter?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they're going to work on it.
Thank you very much.
Couple months. You bet.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Stephanie, you ready to public comment on this?
I don't have anyone signed up, Mayor.
All right. Would the city, thank you, if you could stay close just when we get ready for the council discussion. Thank you, and, and good job.
All right.
Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill eight seventy-two, ordinance, adoption of state-mandated building and construction codes. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington relating to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-one Washington State Building Code and related matters, amending Federal Revised Code thirteen one six zero two zero, thirteen one six zero three zero, thirteen two zero zero five zero, thirteen two zero zero nine zero, thirteen two two zero two zero, thirteen two two zero three zero, thirteen two six zero two zero, thirteen two six zero three zero, thirteen two eight zero two zero, thirteen two eight zero three zero, thirteen three one zero two zero, thirteen three one zero three zero, thirteen three four zero two zero, thirteen three four zero three zero, thirteen three eight zero two zero, thirteen forty one zero two zero, thirteen forty three zero two zero, thirteen forty three zero three zero, and adding chapter thirteen forty-seven Federal Revised Code including sections thirteen four seven zero one zero, thirteen four seven zero two zero, and thirteen four seven zero three zero.
All right. Councilmember Doby, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd moved to forward the proposed ordinance, the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion of a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The mayor passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott. Item B, Council Bill eight seventy-three, ordinance, licensing, permanent supportive housing, and traditional housing and emergency housing shelter. First, Keith Niven, our community development director, will provide a presentation, and then we'll move on from there. The floor is yours, Mr. Niven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council president, coach, more city council members. Keith Niven, I'm going to stop talking because I can't do both at the same time. So, I'm going to, I'm going to start with a little context here. So, House Bill twenty twelve twenty, which was passed by the legislature in two thousand twenty-one, required cities to accommodate both permanent supportive housing and emergency housing and shelter. So, staff went through a process to amend our codes, to add those provisions into our code. And when those provisions came to the city council, the city council asked for us to include some licensing provisions for the operation of those facilities. And that happened in two thousand twenty-two. And as much as I'd like to say we think about all scenarios when we write code, frankly, we didn't think about the day center. We were focused on the, the Red Lion and the extended stay. And both of those facilities are going to have overnight guests. And so, when we wrote the licensing provisions, they were really all written with an expectation that those facilities are open seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and that they have residents that are staying there as well as guests. And so, what you have before you this evening with this ordinance is some revisions to just really clarify that these licensing provisions apply to facilities like the day center and not just ones that have overnight residents. So, with that, we'll go through this, and then I'll try to address Ms. Patrick's questions. And hopefully, I do an okay job with that. So, the policy question in front of the city council, should the city council amend Federal Way revised code Title twelve to provide code clarifications relating to emergency shelters that do not accommodate overnight residents? The background on this is licensing provisions were adopted in January of two thousand twenty-two. Provisions contemplated all facilities would house residents, as I mentioned. For those that do not, the code created room for necessary staff interpretations. And this proposed code amendment clarified the provisions of twelve thirty-five oh seventy, which is standards of safety and operation. I can quickly go through those if you'd like. But it does not- But it does not apply to facilities without overnight residents. And under Federway 1235-080, which is standards of conduct, which really relates to safety and use of drugs, those, we expanded to include guests and not just residents, because you could read the code, which says only residents, and say, well, guests are not considered as part of that. So, part of this was to really kind of expand the provisions to cover all the scenarios that we might be dealing with. And the mayor's recommendation is to approve the proposed ordinance amendments, which is option one. Now, in terms of the public comment, what I would say is, we have, we have one facility in town that is kind of a pre-existing situation, and we knew that that was gonna be a little bit of a challenge, getting an existing facility to come back and go through licensing. And what I can tell you is, we have put the licensing provisions in place. We had to create them from scratch. We then informed the day center that they needed to submit for a license. They did make that application. Unfortunately, it was not complete, so we told them we needed additional information, and it's been in their court since. The difficult thing we have is, we really have two mechanisms. There's one in code. So, there's a section that basically says, if you're late, so that's 1235-060, which talks about if you're late, the fee for that licensing goes up. But the only other choice we have is, without the license, they are considered an unlawful business, and therefore, we could shut them down. And right now, we've been having conversations with Catholic Community Services, basically trying to get them to complete their licensing provisions. I think we're gonna get there, we're just not there yet, sadly to say. I had a conversation with Sarah before the end of last year, trying to spur this along. We're, we're working on it. So, so, it's, I think, an anomaly. So, for other facilities like the Red Lion and the extended stay, we will ensure that these provisions and this licensing is executed before we give them occupancy of those facilities. So, I think for anything that comes online between now and hopefully the end of time, I think that the city is in a good spot for getting the licensing in place before they're operational. For the day center, because it was existing when we adopted the licensing provisions, it's just a little bit of a harder conversation for us to have, because our, our choices are fairly limited. So, I don't know if, and, and as far as, I heard some comment about residential, there's still separation requirement in our code. If there was a facility that opened in a residential zone, the licensing provisions do apply for those facilities as well.
Okay, great. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So, the Red Lion, excuse me, is gonna be for emergency shelter?
Yes.
Can you explain how a guest would be included in that? So, if, if a...
So, it's emergency shelter, so there's, there's a little bit of, if I can lead you on a little bit, maybe this might, this might help. So, emergency housing and shelter are technically two different things. Emergency housing, which is what the Red Lion will be, the expectation is that people would be there for six months or less. Now, less might be, you know, two weeks, but it might be up to six months while the operators of that facility seek to find them permanent supportive housing somewhere. So, the idea of the emergency housing is that it's kind of a stepping stone to go from homelessness to permanent supportive housing. And so, like, if you are living there for six months, if you think about being a resident for somewhere for six months, there may be times when you have guests come and visit you. And so, the licensing provisions was, as I said, expanded to not just cover residents, but also guests.
Okay, I, I was thinking more of, it would be used as a nightly shelter for, you know, someone who needed shelter that night and might not need it for the next night.
So, right now, and, and we, there's, there's many layers to this onion. So, severe weather shelters, so either heat or cold, or natural disaster shelters, all do not fall under the provisions of our licensing. That's a separate, they are separate things. So, someone who might need shelter for, you know, a night when it's freezing out, that kind of a facility doesn't go through kind of this process. This is more for longer term.
Okay. And then, two more questions. How long will the city wait for the day center to offer a complete application? And does the Fusion Shelter, have they completed an application for licensing?
Um...
Are you speechless?
So, the first question is, you know, that will be a conversation that we need to have with the mayor.
Okay.
You know, as, as, we, we recently, so, you know, the conversation I had with Jacqueline and Anna was, the conversations we're having with the day center right now are fairly, they're fairly responsive. You know, there, there was a situation we had in kind of the third quarter of last year when we had a number of tents show up in the parking lot. When we asked for Dan and Bill to come in and meet with us, we talked about that that was unacceptable, we clarified where property boundaries were, and then they asked those folks to leave. And so, I think right now, we're having a fairly decent kind of conversational relationship with them as an entity, and I think that's why I feel fairly positive that we'll get to this license execution. But how long should we wait? That's a policy question, I think, and, because right now, the code is, is silent on that part of it.
Well, I, I do wanna let, you know, be transparent, that we wanna give them as much grace as possible. They provide such essential services to the really, to the people in our community, they're really on the edge. What's great, what's great about the organization is, number one, they were immediately receptive when we sat down and talked about what was happening in their parking lot, and they were concerned, as, as we were, about what was happening. They got the assistance to the, to the individual that had been there, and it had been a real challenge for everybody trying to help that individual, that homeless person. So, you know, we're gonna give them as much, as, you know, as reasonable. It can't go on, you know, forever, but they do important work and, and get people back into a situation where they can connect with their families, get into treatment, you know, and so, that's, that's something we're gonna work with them. And they've been very responsive. They've got a very professional staff, and, you know, we're hopeful.
And I think one thing, council member, that is, is apparent to me is, the licensing provision that we've put in place is a bar above what most other communities have done. So, this is kind of a learning curve for not just staff, but also those, those agencies that are working in multiple different cities.
And what about Fusion?
I don't have an update on Fusion, so I can get back to you tomorrow. I need to talk to Sarah on Fusion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Dania?
Yeah, mine's on the day center, just two quick questions on that one. You had mentioned they had turned in a partial application. My curiosity is, what areas didn't get filled out? If it's like a contentious point? And the second one is, how long has it been since the first one was turned in that we're still waiting for a response? I know we're gonna give them grace, but I'm just curious what the timeframe's been so far.
Sure. The first question, I, I have to be honest, I did not review it, Sarah did, so I can get back to you on that one. My sense on timing is, it's been about three or four months that it's been in their court.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Seifadassan?
Yes, thank you. So, in the, in the, in the memo, it says the code is written to accommodate extended stay and the Red Lion. Does that preclude or other shelters or emergency housing that come up in the future, or is that inclusive of everything?
It's, it's intended to include all of it. So, the, the Red Lion and the extended stay are examples of facilities that I think we're fairly certain are coming our way, but there will be others somewhere down the road. And this, the, the code is written generally to cover all permanent supportive housing facilities and emergency housing and shelter within the city.
So, do we need to have that statement in there, then? Or is it important, or?
No, I think it's, I think the code is clear that it's not specific to those two facilities.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Keith. On this, basically, it's adding, you know, except for emergency housing, the shelter, shelter facilities do not, that do not provide overnight accommodations, you know, referring to the day center. And there's, some of the things that it's accepting make very good sense, you know, like, you know, referrals are not, you know, needed. But there's some that I don't quite understand why we're making an exception for it. That very first one, adopt and broadly disseminate a written security and emergency plan for residents, guests, and employees. I mean, shouldn't there be a emergency plan for the day shelter as well, rather than accepting it from that?
So, so you added a word when you read that. So, right now, what A, what 070A says is adopt and broadly disseminate a written security and emergency plan for residents and employees. It does not say guests. So...
Okay, I, I understand that adding the guests is important.
So, so, I think when I read through 070A through, A through H, one, A through H, so, so the security and emergency plan, you know, again, that, that, the way I read all of these really pertained more to facilities that had overnight residents staying at them. The day center is, is open during business hours, you know, and, and so, like, like, if you go into Fred Meyer, do they have an emergency plan that I, as a shopper, am gonna like, find? I, I don't know, I don't even know the answer to that question. So, I think the question is, I, I, as, as, as staff looked through this code, the provisions of 070 really seem to apply more to facilities that were providing overnight kind of places for people to live, whereas the section on 080 was really more, I think, applicable to both, both the, something like the day center, but also something like the Red Lion or extended stay.
Well, one thing that I, I found recently with my own business is, I mean, obviously, we're just open during the day, and I found out from the Department of Labor and Industries that a emergency plan is required...
Really?
...by them, yes. And so, so it seems like that that's something that there should be some type of emergency plan, and, I mean, posted so that the guests coming in, you know, that, that their, their clients coming in are aware of, aware of things. I mean, you're not having to probably disseminate through the community...
Sure.
...at least for those clients that are, that are coming in, that at least have it posted and, and make it clear that, hey, if there's, you know, what, what the, what the, you know, what the security plan is.
Sure. So, again, I, I think if, if there is something that, like, Ellen and I requires in terms of a business or, or a operation to have, that's, that's gonna exist.
Well, I mean, for that, that was for our employees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's for employees. You know, I think part of this, when we adopted this ordinance provision back in 2022, like I said, there, there were not models that we could just basically plug and play from. We, we kind of created this from scratch, to some extent, based on comments that the community had. My, my full expectation was, we were gonna kind of test drive this for a bit, and I don't know that we have lessons learned yet. You know, the, the revisions that are in front of the council this evening are based on our conversations between the day center and their, the interest of Catholic Community Services to lease up the Stevenson Motel, which then pushed us to say, no, the day center is an emergency shelter, even though they don't have overnight residents. And then, what that then led us to, looking at, was the licensing provision that we've been pushing the day center to get, and say, well, all of these licensing provisions relate to residents. Well, they don't have residents. And so, what's in front of you this evening is really trying to clarify that we have one, at least now, maybe Fusion two, that, that don't have overnight residents, and we may have more in the future, and that our licensing provisions should really address both. Now, if, if the council believes that there are certain things under 070, which should relate to facilities that don't have overnight residents, I'm more than happy to take that back and kind of relook at this, but...
Yeah. I, I think that item F also, on post-prominent list of all human and health services offered with a brief description of services and the availability for such services. It seems like that that would be a given, that, that the day center should have that posted, what services that the, their clients can receive and where to go to get those services.
So...
It doesn't seem like that would be just for a place with overnight guests, but, but, you know, the, the day center should be posting that as well.
And, and again, they may. Just because it's on this list and under a requirement under facilities that have overnight residents, doesn't mean that for the facilities that don't have overnight residents, that they don't do that as a customer service to their clients that they have. So, I think, I mean, I think, the, the question is, is what does this council want to mandate? And some good business practices, I think, are, are gonna happen, because those organizations wanna provide their clients with service. That's part of what they do. So, just because it's not listed, doesn't mean they don't do it. And I think the question is, you know, this was intended to be like, the bottom of the bar. You know, things that happen above it are great, but this is intended to set the, the baseline.
I, I think that maybe we should raise the bar a little bit on, on some of those. And, and then also, what is the provisions, you know, if, if something is licensed, what is the, what's cause for revocation of the license? I mean, if, if, I mean, what does it take for them to, if they're, if, whether it's the, whether it's a place with overnight stays or without overnight stays, what is cause for revocation of their license?
So, that's a discretionary decision of the city as the licensing entity. So, again, the, if we pull the license and close the business, there's gonna be issues in the community for that act.
Definitely.
And so, part of it is, you know, the, I think what, at least the conversations that the mayor and I have had is, like, part of our role is to be partners with these agencies, to get them to actually wanna be part of this community, and a positive part of this community, which means you tend to, I think, try to work with, if there are violations, like, let's assume that after we get the licensing in place for the day center, that there's issues with people crowding the sidewalk on 13th and causing a safety issue for pedestrians wanting to walk by that facility. You know, I, I assume the first thing we would do is call them into our, our office to have a conversation about, hey, this is not acceptable, why are you letting that happen? And, and if they're non-responsive, then, you know, obviously, we have one path in front of us ultimately, and that is to, you know, withdraw their license and close them down.
No. But, but we don't need anything in the ordinance that if, that they're non-cooperation, that's subject to revocation?
I'll leave that to the city attorney.
I mean, we could absolutely expressly state that, but the whole concept of licensing is that you need a license to operate.
All right, fair enough. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have any, oh, first of all, do we have any public comment on this?
Yeah, I can turn it in.
Okay, actually, you can do that after, Derek Mandeville.
Thank you so much, Rick. I have no voice, so I'm gonna strain. My first comment is, so I also work with vulnerable adults. I work with people with Alzheimer's and dementia, so very vulnerable adults in our community, and I am highly, I'm sure Mr. Drank can tell you, highly licensed and regulated by the state and the city. I have a city license as well. My concern is, we're dealing with the same population regardless of what you put on. It's temporary, it's permanent, it's transition. We're dealing with the same community of people, and I feel like with all, and I, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I know that it has been several years, and, but I feel like we're creating too many loopholes. And my concern is that, just like now, Catholic Community Services, you know, Mr. Niven's was very clear about there being some, or I forget what word you're using, cold medicine, sorry, cooperative. They're, they're running a business in our city, and I'm sure they're making plenty of money. When is it, when, why can't we give them a hard stop? Like, give them six months. I, I feel like it's been more than three or four months, but give them six months. I feel like it's been more than three or four months, but give them six months. We need the license, we need the application. Our police force, who do a tremendous job under, you know, without the means that they need, that they're just running in circles over there because they can't do anything. And then one of the things that we noticed during election times is several people in the community use the day center as their home address, their mailing address. My residence is my address. So I feel like it's tomato-tomato. It's like either they're there or they're not. Why can't we just have the same rules for all of them? And, yeah, there was more, but I don't remember. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Derek. We heard you. All right. And actually, do we want to have Ms. Patrick come back up? Ms. Patrick, did you have any additional follow-up?
Well, you know, when I'm reading the legal verbiage, it's not clear. So sometimes I wonder if sequentially, if I'm reading it accurately, but I think we should make it really, really clear so that there's no loopholes, because some of the things that are allowed in day shelters versus overnight shelters versus suburban estates, neighborhood residential, it's a little unclear. You know, maybe I'm just not understanding it, but if we can make it more clear to the general public, I don't know if there's, I don't know if that's possible, if it has to have legal verbiage or something, but having had, as you all know, I had, we had a day shelter in our neighborhood that had a lot of foot traffic. And I, you know, I'm not clear, reading that, too, is a day shelter allowed across from a school, near a school? Does that still, does that rule about the distance from schools apply to those types of shelters? That needs to be made clear, I think, because, you know, we have that zoning, I think it's in the zoning, that they have to be spaced a certain distance apart, it can't be near a school, but does that apply to the day shelters, too, emergency shelters? So that part, I wanted to clarify. And then just the sheer amount of foot traffic for a day shelter, and just knowing the impact to some of the businesses, just driving our businesses out. So we have to have some enforcement. We just, we have to. We can't afford to lose more businesses in the city. So I'm not super confident with the verbiage for just the day shelters as far as like not having to do the background checks on every single person. Or, you know, I think at New Hope, they did background checks. So, but, you know, how is that defined? Who gets one, who doesn't? You know, we want to not, make sure we're not discriminating, so do we want to just require it across the board? Is that complicated? Those types of things. I don't like that we're harboring people, that I've heard that some of the facilities will not allow the police to, they kind of exclude the police, so if, you know, they sort of harbor people that maybe they shouldn't be harboring. So these are things that need to be addressed. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll have Keith come back up and address some of those. Gordon Bach.
You know, I'm, one, I want to acknowledge the great work this city is doing in trying to create these ordinances in the city council and trying to address the issue. And as a member of the audience sitting, I want to acknowledge the great work that the Catholic Community Services is trying to do for the community. I'm looking here at 12.35.080, standards of conduct. All residents and guests comply with applicable federal, state, and local laws. No residents or guests shall exhibit threatening behavior or unsafe behavior. And what I hear is that the day center, as well as various other social areas, provide a very valuable service to those who are in need of those services. However, what I also hear is that, especially the day center in particular, is creating an environment that's attracting some negative behaviors. And I'm wondering if it's possible, if there's a possibility that we could create clear and defined standards on levels of violation. So if there's so many crimes committed by a member of the, by someone consuming, let's say, I'm just going to pick on the day center here, and I apologize for picking on them, if there's so many incidents of crime from member, from people consuming services from the day center, that we could revoke that license and shut that day center down. The most important thing for the community is our businesses. They provide jobs, they provide tax revenue. Without our businesses, the city does not function. But I want to acknowledge the importance of providing services for those who are in need. And so how can we strike that balance to ensure that our businesses can thrive while providing a safety net and holding people accountable? And I want to thank you very much for listening, taking my comments.
Thank you, Gordon. All right, Keith, did you get all that? Come on up.
First off, Happy New Year, everybody. It's been a day.
Nice.
All right, so let me try. So first off, Ms. Patrick is correct. There's currently separation requirements in the zoning code that says that any emergency shelter needs to be at least 1,000 feet away from the next emergency shelter or a public school. So that creates basically, and kind of the day center becomes a dot on a map, and our GIS, geographic information systems, folks, then can plot out, which is how we determined that the Stevenson Motel was too close to the day center, which is why it got denied. As much as it might make sense to Mr. Bach's point that we create quantifiable thresholds, even though that might sound very scientific, that's very discretionary in terms of where you set those thresholds, right? So you're making a discretionary decision, and of which you might have an egregious situation, which is one and done, which now, all of a sudden, if you say you get three strikes, now it's like, well, we can't done them, even though maybe it was egregious. So I think we've left it open-ended to give the city the discretion to potentially, which doesn't maybe give a lot of predictability to those nonprofits that are providing these type of facilities, but I think part of it is, again, getting back to, you know, the goal is hopefully that we can all work together as partners in the community and not be kind of throwing sticks at each other. So in terms of Ms. Patrick's comments about, you know, a shelter in her neighborhood, you know, again, I don't know the details. What I understand is there were a number of unrelated people living in one, or at least appearing to live in one house, and that that was causing both a parking and disruption issue to the neighborhood. And that is less an issue, first off, it's not a licensed shelter, it's more somebody using their residence or renting a residence for a certain purpose. And part of it is the provisions that came out of House Bill 1220, which caused us to basically remove the limitation of six non-related people as being able to live within a house. So we're kind of living within the bounds that we've been given, and in terms of a number of unrelated people living in a house, that can just happen in any house, and it's not necessarily a shelter or permanent supportive housing. So I think I hopefully got them all. And in terms of the loopholes, I'm not sure, I guess I don't see loopholes. I see flexibility. And again, we can tighten that down if we get to situations down the road where it feels like we need to. I don't feel like we're at that spot right now, but again, that's my opinion.
And we're not going to let the situation at the day center just continue for...
No, no, no. I heard six months. I'm hoping in the next two months that we get their application back in, and I'll have that conversation with Sarah tomorrow and make that more of a priority.
All right, Kasper McDaniel.
Yeah, I'm just got a couple clarification comments, questions. So my understanding is the ordinance of a passing day is actually pretty much a starting point that we've gone back to and made some adjustments to a previous ruling, and now we're making some more adjustments, giving a little bit more teeth. But from some of the conversations and what I think is going to happen in the next couple of years, this is going to be a moving target, so we'll probably come back and make some more adjustments as we get feedback from these groups and as new groups come into the city. Is that kind of what we're looking at? This is a moving process that we're going to continue to come back and probably review this particular one?
I would love to think that we're so smart, we got it right the first time, but as we are here this evening, making a slight adjustment, my guess is this will evolve a little bit as some of these facilities operate within the city and we see where we may have missed some pieces. For example, that laundry list of lighting and emergency plan and, 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 my guess is we missed a couple of things there that we're going to want to add somewhere down the road, and I would expect we'll be back having another conversation about licensing once some of those facilities start operating and we see maybe some of the things we missed.
Now, in your opinion, getting this through, does that give us more teeth, what we currently have, to get the day center to where we need them to be, so that if we have someone new coming in, instead of waiting and adding more to it right now and coming back, is it more, you know, I'm trying to get clarification, is it better now to get this going as we have it and then come back and make adjustments to it, in your opinion?
So I'm not a lawyer. I don't even play it on TV every now and then, but what I believe this does is clarify the provisions. You know, I think we were on solid ground with the day center in terms of saying that the licensing applied to them, and that because they didn't have residents, that those things still applied, but this, by expanding it to guests on the drugs and the safety issues, I think we're in a better place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Were there any other public comments on this issue?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone signed up.
Okay, just want to make sure. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 873, Ordinance Licensing Permanent Supportive Housing and Transitional Housing and Emergency Housing and Shelter, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to licensing of permanent supportive housing and transitional housing and emergency housing and shelter, amending Federal Revice Code 1235070 and 1235080.
All right, Kasper Doby.
Yes, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the January 16, 2024 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion?
Before the second reading, can there be any tweaks or anything in it before second reading that can be made?
Not without direction tonight.
What's that?
Not without direction tonight. We would need a vote of council to make specific changes.
Is there a, how could he accomplish that right now, to amend the motion?
If council as a collective has specific changes, not just one council member, but everybody, a motion to direct staff to come back with a second reading with those changes would be...
Okay, would that be in the form of an amendment, that it would be subject to, to move it subject to these?
Yes.
Okay. So is that your motion?
I'm not sure the specific...
Provisions?
Specific provisions. I mean, it may be best just to do it and then, like Councilmember McDaniel said, it's kind of a moving target and fix it.
Counsel...
Just some more adjusting later. I'm not sure.
Councilmember? Before, but, you know, we're kind of, as my older brother Phil used to say, you know, when you're doing something, pouring concrete could be a monument to your ignorance forever if you don't know what you're doing. And so we're about to pour some concrete here. So my question is, do you want to pull back before we pour it and go back to committee and refine it, or do you want to pour it right?
Is there, what is the urgency of this? I mean, is it something that, what is the downside of going back to committee to tweak it some? Is there a downside? Other than more work for you?
More work for me and Ryan's staff, I think.
That's the principle, that's, it's iterative. I think we're, like has been said, we're going to have to come back with modifications in the future. If it went back to committee right now, I think the principal issue is we're operating on an interpretation of the existing code. As Director Niven stated, we did not draft the current code even thinking of the shelter. So we're using, I wouldn't say super creative, but it's an interpretation of the existing code to accommodate that. This fixes that.
Yeah, okay, so it sounds like we should go ahead and pass it now and try to chip out some concrete later.
If we do not pass this, does that give more stance for the communities, not communities, but the day center to hold back on finishing the application and stuff like that?
I don't think that this is what's motivating them. I think that their desire to be a good partner is what's motivating them to comply, but that certainly, I've never heard an argument that they think that they're not required to follow these rules.
Okay, so I don't hear a motion. There's been a motion, a second. That was a part of the discussion. Do we hear a motion to amend?
I'll, we can fix it later.
All right. Okay. All right. Pour that concrete. I can't begin to tell you how many times I've used that metaphor. All right, there's been, oh, what Brother Phil would say is pouring concrete could be a monument to your ignorance forever if you don't know what you're doing.
Oh, that's funny.
I saw my older brother make that mistake in a hot July day, and he had to jackhammer out a, yes, so needless to say, I learned the lesson well as a young person.
Yeah, here we are.
Oh, okay, good, okay. Philly's wisdom is something I want to share. So, all right, there's been a motion, a second, a good discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, second reading and enactment. Item C, Council Bill 871, Ordinance Update to Indemnification Policy. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 871, Ordinance Update to the Indemnification Policy, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to indemnification of city officials and employees, amending Federal Revice Code 205030, 205040, 205050, 205060, 205070, 205090, 205100, and 205120.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Trank, do you have a motion?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Now, we're on to council reports, first meeting of the year. Councilmember Sephardos.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you. A great way to start our 2024. Not knowing whether or not we're going to have a deputy mayor, I just want to make sure that Councilmember Honda, I just want to share my appreciation for all the work that you have done and continue to do. So, thank you so much. But also, I know the regional committee reports was folded into the deputy mayor's report, and if we don't have a deputy mayor in the future, I think that should still be there
Okay.
so that we could continue to talk about regional committee meetings and other regional issues, so.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion, but otherwise, thank you all, and I look forward to a wonderful 2024 and a great working relationship.
Very good, thank you. Kasper McDaniel.
I'm going to fall off on that one, and I thought it was quite interesting learning going through the first process of voting for the council president, and I've got my little book on rules up here now, so I can keep track of what's going on. I find that to be quite an interesting learning curve for me to get over. I hope everybody had a great holiday season and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year is belated, and I wanted to shout out to my buddy MJ, who's getting his black belt tonight, but I'm here, so I can't see him do it. So MJ, congratulations. Black belt.
All right, very good. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. There's recently been a Facebook post about an organization that looked at cities around the country and those cities that are losing population, and Federal Way was mentioned in that. And so there's quite this social media discussion that we lost 2% of our population between 2020 and 2021, from 101,000 down to 99,037. So my question is, what is our current official population? Because our official population, the membership things that we belong to, like SCA, AWC, NLC, charge based on population, and we could save some money if we were under 100,000. So if that is the true official population...
I've never heard that.
I can send you the, I'll actually send it to you.
Well, and we get the updates from the state auditor?
The last update we got from OFM was we were at 102, and that was last year, and that's how we ended up getting $325,000 of grant money from Calm. that's how we ended up getting $325,000 of grant money from Commerce, because we were over 100,000. So I'm fairly confident we're still at that 102, plus or minus mark. So...
All right. Good to know. Also, thank you for that. It's, it's, it was interesting to read some of the cities that they talked about. But it was also stunning to see Federway, Washington in this. Several people have contacted me about the flag poles along Campus Drive, saying that there were lights out on some of the poles. And as we all know, an American flag needs to be lit at all times. So I took a drive along there, and there are several lights that are out. In the contract that established what was going to happen with those flag poles when Mr. Optimus sold them to the city, I believe King County was responsible for maintaining the lights. So is there someone from the city who could contact King County?
John. I believe you're correct, that it is King County that takes care of the lights. And yes, between me and EJ, we'll figure out. I'll, I'll reach out to the county and see what we can get done.
Okay, because there are several poles that are without light.
Okay.
EJ, do you have any further information?
I was going to say the same thing, John, just the...
Do you have, do you know which states?
I don't know which states. I'd have to drive along at night and get a...
Well, we'll take care of it. We'll take care of it.
But there are several. And there's one flag pole without any flags on it at all. It would be the end of the alphabetical order.
Okay.
Because it's near Seventh Avenue Southwest.
Okay.
And I have, people have talked to me about that, too. And I do not know which one that is. I didn't look at it. I mean, I looked at it, but I didn't look at the, the tag on it. And financial literacy classes, over the course of the last few weeks, I've heard several commercials on TV from different financial institutions about financial literacy. And it is certainly really an important topic. I know that the state is going to be discussing having that as a required course for students in our state, which I think we should be supporting as a council. But I was wondering if maybe we could get a list of local financial institutions that offer financial literacy classes for free, so that people have an option if what we're offering doesn't work, that maybe something else works. And we could have a list for, because it, it's important to the council. And it's just giving information to the public.
Well, Bill Vino has done an incredible amount of work on this. We'll, we'll task him with that and look into what he could find.
And last, well, lastly, City Action Days, which is something that AWC sponsors, is being held February 7th and 8th. And it's in Lacey this year. So there's less space than they've had before. If you're interested in going, it's one and a half, two-day event. And you get a lot of different courses and discussions on what's going on with the legislative session. And you get to meet with the legislators. If you're interested in going, let Amy know so she can get you registered ASAP, because they are getting really full. And it would be, it's just a good way to learn what's going on in Olympia. And secondly, I'd just like to thank the council for, I've been the deputy mayor, council president, deputy mayor for six years. And I think the council has certainly grown in those six years. And I'm proud of what we've accomplished. So I do agree that it's a position that should be shared among other people. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your service. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to the newly re-elected council members and council president. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Susan Honda and Linda Koshma for your service for the last two years leading the council. And this, this year 2024 are going to be a very challenging year for us. So I'm looking forward to work with all of you to a positive and productive year. And thank your staff for your continued support. And last but not least, go dogs.
Here, here. Here, here. Councilor Walsh.
All right. Yeah, I, I also would like to thank Susan for her, her service as deputy mayor. Thank you, thank you very much. And, and your dedication and work on, on the council. I, I, I don't think there's any other council member that, that studies the, the, the financial reports like what Susan does. I mean, I, I, I know that I don't. And so I, I especially appreciate her, her work there. That's really all I have to say, other than when I, earlier when I was thanking everybody, I failed to thank the staff. We have an incredible staff here at the city.
Here, here.
I mean, both the, the directors that are here right now, and, and everyone else that works at the city. And, and they receive a lot of recognition. And they, they do an incredible job. And so thank you for that.
All right, Councilor Doby.
I only have one, two comments, actually. Looking forward to 2024 and all that we have in front of us. And, and one thing I heard from the citizen comments today from our human services, kind of hit home from, many years ago, the mayor went around to each commission and had kind of a, here's how the council, here's how the commission interact together. And it was kind of an educational approach. And it sounds like after, you know, hearing people saying, hey, we changed it the last hour, and we did, we made some different changes, it might be time to maybe go through to each commission. And it could be mayor, council, whatever. But make sure everybody understands that we appreciate them tremendously, and they do a lot of work. But sometimes things change, and it's not always going to be what comes out of the commission. And it, it might just make communications a lot better. So I'd throw that out to our council president and our mayor to maybe think about having a, a meeting with all the commissions and making sure they understand how all the process works.
It's a great idea. Brian, let's talk about that, moving forward. And I, we started with the senior commission, and we'll go from there. And there's been a lot of contact with the diversity commission. So we'll, I think it's a great idea. We'll do that. Thank you. All right, council president.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Don, and my colleagues, for your confidence in the, but you're next, please. Think about it. We're, moving forward, we have a lot of things on our agenda, a lot of exciting things about how to create a city. We're still not there yet. We're still trying to create this city. It's, it's very tangible. And so, need everybody, all hands on deck, all the community and the, the council. So be sure to let me know if you want any changes on your committee assignments. I'll be calling you about that. And in the meantime, I, I wish you all a very happy, healthy New Year. Thank you.
Here, thank you. Thank you, council. With that, we are adjourned.